And Alex from Finance.
How come you didn't send me?
I know.
Yeah, that would've gone.
Budget.
The time is 5:30 PM on Monday, June 12th, and I'd like to call this work session to order. Up first are city updates. Mayor, please take it away.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a couple of things I want to chat with you about this evening for a couple of minutes. As you know, Counselor Atencio and I, along with Deputy Chief Garcia, Sergeant Frank Ortega, Counselor Sergeant Jeremy Matthews, and Citizen Serena Pacheco, just returned from a trip, a Sister Cities trip to Chihuahua, Mexico, our sister city. We spent time touring four factories, visiting some landmarks, and the visit culminated in a renewal of our sister city agreement that we entered into, I think, some thirty years ago. It's our longest sister city relationship, as I recall, and it's been about thirty-four years, I think, since we've been a sister city. While we were there, we signed an agreement which will bring to council for ratification in the next couple of weeks. That sort of, not really any binding commitments, but just recommits us to working with them on cultural, educational, economic development matters. During this last thirty years, the police and the fire departments have had the strongest relationships with Chihuahua. They've exchanged training, they've exchanged equipment, those kind of things. There's been cultural sharing with dancers from Pueblo going there and vice versa. They've been visiting us at the Colorado State Fair. Our hope in doing this is this will strengthen our relationship. One time, there were educational exchanges between students in Chihuahua and Pueblo. In fact, we met a guy, Ricardo Torres, who was the dean of the engineering school at the University of Chihuahua, and he got his education in Pueblo. And he's now the dean of engineering down there, and I think he sent Counselor Atencio and I a letter saying he's happy to help with any kind of educational exchanges that we want to work on in that regard. And so I think when we get a new president at CSUP, we'll try to get them more involved in this. I was very impressed by the city of Chihuahua, had never been there before. Like Pueblo, it sometimes gets a bad rap in terms of its reputation. You know, it's a dangerous place to go, crime is on the rise, you can't, you're not safe there in Chihuahua. From what we experienced, I don't think anything could be farther from the truth, and I think that's sometimes the case in Pueblo as well. Chihuahua's a city that's about three hundred years old and the probably founded, you know, a couple of hundred years before that in terms of the colonies and stuff that was there, but in terms of formal. So it's a real old city with a lot of history, but we stayed in a modern district. And that modern district, the street there reminded me a lot of what Union Avenue is going to look like when we revitalize that in terms of single car lanes of traffic, very pedestrian friendly, wide sidewalks where people were out there. So it was, I think, very educational, very informative for me. The other thing I want to talk about is items N-13 and N-14 that are going to be on your consent agenda for first reading this evening. You'll see those are the amendments to the collective bargaining agreement with the International Brotherhood of Police Officers, and it's a classification plan for police. This is our plan to deal with the recruitment efforts and to try to retain officers we have. If adopted by the city council, the changes to this collective bargaining agreement, new officers will be started at the current step three, which is about an eight hundred dollar a month raise from what they're getting now. And recall that in January of this year, we increased the starting pay for a entry-level police officer by five hundred dollars a month. So the gist of this is that we have raised the starting pay for entry-level police officers in the city of Pueblo by twenty-eight point five percent in the last twelve months. I think that's remarkable steps that we've taken to try to attract more police officers. We'll see if money's the problem or whether or not some of those other things that we've talked about in terms of societal issues or what's keeping from people wanting to be police officers. But we're happy to do that, and we're hoping that council will pass that. It also includes a ten thousand dollar retention bonus for existing officers that will be paid at the end, when they get their July paycheck at the end of July. It'll be paid from ARPA funds or out of the general fund if ARPA is not appropriate, and it'll implement a quarter master system as well. So that's on for first reading tonight. And you'll get a more thorough staff report in two weeks when it comes on for the final reading. But I just wanted to make sure that you're aware that that's that's going to be before you, and we're hoping that that will help us with that. Let me just go back to Chihuahua for a moment, talk about the real crime center that we had a chance to observe that. I've been talking with the chief about getting set up here, and I know he's anxious to do that. But it's, we got a chance to tour that center, and it's a pretty slick system in terms of camera system that they can sort of track these criminals. While we were there, a person was trying to shoplift and took off running, and they were able to call in, get these cameras trained on them, and they could follow them where they're going, and we could see the police officers following them. We didn't stay long enough to know whether they ended up catching the person, but they could move from camera to camera as they changed their location on their attempt to elude the police. So as I say, quite educational, some things we'll talk about with the police department here in terms of trying to implement. And interesting to me was they sort of developed that real-time crime center, they programmed it themselves. Had the programmers right there that were doing, helping us with the presentation and stuff. So very, very informative. And that concludes the city's updates this evening.
Great. Thanks, Mayor, for that update. Counselor Atencio, did you have anything to say?
Yeah, that real-time crime center was, is really impressive. This is the second time that I've got to see it. And they, like the mayor said, they can literally track someone from as they're driving down the street or running down the street, like was the case with the one we saw. They could literally chase people by camera. And if, one thing that was really impressive is that if it becomes real dangerous, the people that are monitoring the cameras in the real-time crime center can talk to the police officers on the street and tell them, you're going into a real dangerous situation. They'll back off, get the necessary equipment or whatever they need, personnel there that they need, and then attack the problem. So an individual police officer doesn't go into a situation where it's real dangerous and they can get hurt. That was really, really impressive. And then, of course, the drones that they had, their drones literally can follow a car. Let's say a high-speed chase, and let's say they got away from the police officers, they're still following them with the drone. The drone has the capability of reading license plates. So real crime fighting equipment, really impressive, and we definitely need something like that in Pueblo. And then, on a lighter note, I have two six-foot-high Chihuahua dogs in my garage, or had them. They're at El Pueblo Museum right now, and El Pueblo wants them out of there. I definitely don't want them back in my garage, but we invited the mayor to come for Chilean Puebla Festival, and he said he would come. Mayor, if we could, Sister Cities Commission has been wanting to put them at Sister Cities Plaza. We want something from each one of our sister cities. We have one from Pueblo already. Put the dogs on display, and then one from Maribor, one from our Italians, and one from our Chinese city. If it would be okay, we could talk to somebody at, and say, see if we, parks and see if we can display them. We could have unveiling and ribbon cutting with the mayor if he comes, which would really be cool. I'm sure that they would. They, they are. You know how they make that plastic that they make car? Fiberglass, yeah. Yeah, yeah, they could be coated, yeah, I'm sure, and make them, yeah. So, and that would really be cool if we could do that with the mayor when he comes. And the city of Chihuahua donated them to the city of Pueblo, we've just never had a chance to put them up. Yeah, yeah, they're really cool dogs. Everybody that walks into the museum wants to take pictures with them, and why the museum would want them out of there is beyond me because they're really great attraction, huh? Oh, yeah. Yeah.
They came from the city.
Oh, yeah, the city donated.
I didn't realize that.
It's a long time ago. Yeah, and they've been going from garage to garage for the last fifteen years, probably. It's been a long time, but that would really be nice if we could do that because I think he would appreciate a lot.
Any other questions for the mayor? Counselor Graham?
Mayor, we've received several phone calls from Ryan McWilliams on the gondola saying that you were gonna possibly be bringing something to the council. Is that, is that happening or?
He has been lobbying me, and I think some of you, for funds to conduct a feasibility study on the gondola. I think forty-two thousand dollars or forty-one thousand dollars would be the city share. It's been represented to me that the county signed up to pay the other half. I tried to talk to most of the counselors about that, and if there's interest, we'll put it on the agenda for. We're not sure where the money comes from, we're not sure what the ARPA connection is, but is there interest in having that on the agenda?
I was just wondering if there's been an update from the county, if they were.
I have not talked to the county about that.
The other half or not, okay.
I'll reach out and try to find that out, and if they are, then is it the desire council, we put that on the agenda and bring it back?
We should probably have a work session on it.
Yeah.
Guess the information we need then.
We could do that, we could invite Mr. McWilliams or Dana Crawford to come down and do a
Yeah, can we?
Work session on it.
Get that, get that going because I just, I didn't know how to respond, you know, to that was something that the council was interested in.
Okay, other questions for the updates? Seeing none, I'm gonna move right on a long agenda, so the Pueblo Heritage Museum. So can I have Ms. Maral Jones and guest to the podium, please? And when you get to the podium, can you introduce yourself for the record, please?
Oh, fancy, fancy. Grand afternoon, everyone. Evening. I'm Maral Delrene Jones, Director of the Pueblo Heritage Museum.
And I'm Katie Connor, the Board President of the museum.
She's amazing. We are here today to tell you about one of my most favoriteest places on earth, and hello to everyone. Mayor, staff, counselor, thank you for everyone being here. Pueblo's story starts here. Raise your hand, council, if you have been here to the Pueblo Heritage Museum. Okay, good, 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 good. I know the mayor has, he was here recently. So go ahead and go to the next slide, please, thank you. So not only Pueblo's story starts here, but we're also home of Lucky the Horse. Raise your hand if you know Lucky the Horse. Okay, good. If you don't, you gotta come find out who he is, saddle display horse who just survived the flood of nineteen twenty-one and the fire of nineteen eighty-nine. So we have an amazing team, myself, Ciavi Stevens, an active board of eight community members, including Ms. Katie Connor here, several interns, volunteers, and coordinators and educators. There's our information, and we're truly honoring our heritage, history, and co-creating our future. And today I'm here to have the bold and brave request of revitalization assistance so that we can give a facelift to our indigenous peoples exhibit. Next slide, please. So you can see our mission and vision here, and we're truly about not only the Pueblo area but southern Colorado. And we're one of the few places where I feel you can not only see history, but oftentimes touch and see it as well with a lot of authentic artifacts. So this is some more information you can read at your leisure about how we're founded, and just a really amazing place, and I'm so grateful that the universe has brought me to this place to lead here. So go on the next slide. This is a picture of us when the building was built, was a rail and freight building. Go on the next slide, and here's, it is recently, this is a picture back from two thousand, and with a hundred-year anniversary next year, so you'll be hearing from me about that. Woo, woo, next slide. So just more about us to build the foundation and why we deserve lots and lots of epic funds. Pueblo Heritage Museum is creatively serving our local, national, and global community. And we again have so many authentic artifacts. Here's a picture recently of us at South Park Elementary with our coordinator Samuel Gallegos for outreach, as well as Ciavi Stevens. And the students loved it. It was so amazing. We do presentations on different aspects of history, including Native American heritage. We have heritage nights, which are always free with speakers on different amazing topics, art showing, special events, our gift shop as well, and both of those aspects help empower a lot of local artists and entrepreneurs and authors. We do walking tours, in fact, just completed our ladies of the night walking tours, sold out success. And then we also do those school visits and youth classes. We have indigenous storytelling later this year, heritage crafts that Katie is teaching, and I can go on. So go ahead and next slide. Here's a picture of the current exhibit for our indigenous and Native American exhibit. Definitely beautiful. So much work has gone into it over the years. If you come and see in person, you'll be able to see what I mean a bit more. There's a couple of challenges, which I'll actually explain in the next slide when I get there. But you can see there's a beautiful mural by Antonio LaFivra, who was one of our First Friday artists recently. You can also see amazing artifacts. We're actually looking at, looking at a program or aspect of the national scene called NAGPRA, where we can actually make sure some of these artifacts get given a chance to be given back to the peoples and the tribes that they belong to as we look at that. And that being said, the ones that do stay with that, which will be quite numerous. There's an opportunity for growth here. If you come see in person, you'll see why. And we're going to be having an event in November with Dios de los Muertos with an amazing artist to do our First Friday show. And our intention is to have at least phase one of the revitalization done by that, which I believe is November third. It'd be so cool. You can go to the next slide because it gives a bit more context. We already have, we're doing this no matter what, and it would be so amazing to have your support on this. Also, I know that our fellow Slovenian friends did exhibit recently, and they gained support from you. So it'd be great to have that equity, to have the support here for this group to honor indigenous people. And so we are already getting two hundred dollars from storytellers of the ancestral red road who we're collaborating with for the indigenous storytelling present, series of classes. Alfa Mu Delta has given one hundred. I have a pending presentation soon for the Pueblo Human Rights Commission, which is an events-only grant that will be only to fund for that event I mentioned prior. And of course, I'm intending that we get some funding from here, City of Pueblo presenting before you now. So we're asking for five thousand, six hundred seventy-five dollars or more. What this is for is to have updated small signage. If you were able to, in those pictures that were a little small, see, a lot of the signage is quite small. Also, doesn't have quite enough context, and I've gotten some kind feedback from patrons to say like, I wish there was a bit more, a lot of great work again has gone into it. But even speaking with Spencer Little, who was a previous director years ago, just today about the same challenge opportunity, he's never even had the opportunity to update that exhibit since he was there a while back. The reason being is because those display boxes are extremely challenging to open. They have to be unscrewed to be open. It's a very heavy glass box. Again, I invite you to come in person and actually see what I mean with this. So it'd be so great to have some updated display boxes for easy opening ability. That would be quite pricey, but extremely worth it so we can keep those artifacts safe and updated often. Updating the wooden floor in there, which is quite worn down, and smart lighting. It's really challenging when I have a new patron come in, and I wanted to highlight the indigenous exhibit, and I have to manually click our sensor button, which is now gone pretty old, and it's not like a proper sensor. So it's sometimes dark in there unless I'm in there to manually turn on the sensor lights. And also being able to integrate digital interactive displays that will engage kids. And then also, in addition, that small signage, large signage, because we really don't have like one big sign for that dedication to the tribes from this area. What makes this exhibit special is that it's specifically about tribes from this area, local region. I'll go ahead and go to the next slide. I think, oh, I guess I didn't put another one. Go ahead and go back one, please. So that is our request. I know it's a bold and brave request, and with Katie here at my side, she's also here to help me answer questions. Have you guys be able to have questions answered, especially have any questions unable to answer? I think it's super important that the city supports this, especially given the huge Native American indigenous population we have here. And if you do come, take a look, I invite you to come in person, offer you a free entry to come in. I would love to show you this so you could really understand the challenge. I mean, a funny example is that years ago, they did some kind of game with kids to have the kids go exhibit to exhibit and see what's out of place. And there's a random gyroscope inside of one of the Native American exhibit cases, but it's so challenging and kind of a little intimidating to even try to open again. It's these screws that I have to unscrew to even get into it. I've left that gyroscope in there because of the fear of breaking the glasses again. With a lack for a better explanation, it's challenging. So thank you so much for hearing this presentation and invite questions now.
Fantastic. Thank you, Pueblo Heritage Museum, for that presentation. What questions are there from Council? Counselor Flores?
One of the things that I look forward to is the lore. Explain to us, is that something that evolved from the Heritage Museum? Because I gotta tell you, I look forward to seeing that magazine every month, and it's so impressive about, especially the photographs. I really get a kick out of that.
We do also have a newsletter.
There, now it's on, sorry.
Okay, I didn't need to leave it down. Okay, can you hear me now?
Definitely.
We do also have a free newsletter that we send out monthly if you become a member. A little salesmanship. But now I am new to Pueblo. I've only been here about four years. But what I'm aware of is that the, and Laurel Campbell, past president, is here. She can correct me if I'm wrong. But almost twenty-five years ago, the museum opened, but it took about, I'd say about four years to rehab the Rio Grande Building, freight building. And so at the beginning, it was the southeastern Colorado Heritage Center. Sometimes you'll see SCHC when you see our name also. And at that time, several members came together, several groups. The FACC, which is Frey Angelico. Chavez Chapter, thank you. And let's see, we have the Pueblo Heritage, I'm sorry, the Pueblo Archaeology and Historical Society, Lions Club, Conservancy, Board of Waterworks, and then the Pueblo Historical Society. So they all came together at that time. And then through some changes, I'm not sure of, you know, what exactly happened. And there's no one out around that I think really remembers. But we kind of separated. The Pueblo Heritage Museum became its own museum with the members having their displays, exhibits. And Pueblo, the historical society moved upstairs to the second floor. And they may have done the lore before then.
They did do the lore before then.
Yeah.
Yeah, it went around for a long time.
But it is a wonderful publication.
Yeah.
And the reason I brought up the lore is that I think, as you put this indigenous display, that maybe one of the months, and you could encourage them, is to produce a lore just in one of the months. Talk about the, you know, the indigenous population and the history in this area because it's quite wide and it's quite deep. And I'm just.
That's a great idea, and I go up there every day to talk to them, and they've offered me to write articles and stuff. So I love that idea, whether I write an article, even have a whole feature, I'll definitely pass that idea along. Thank you, Councilman Flores.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Counselor Graham?
Is this an ARPA request for us or?
There wasn't an ARPA request, and I don't know if we're talking about wanting the money immediately. We just sent out letters to, and I'm sure you got one.
Yeah, we actually did get that letter for the non-departmental budget. That's something we're going to be applying to separately from this, so this is a bold ask separate from that.
Yeah. Did you receive any ARPA funds?
Um, we.
Yes, we did. Twenty thousand.
And that was last year. Last year, twenty twenty-two. And what was that money for?
Operating expenses generally.
And recovering from pretty hard hit from COVID quarantine.
Did you receive any money from the county?
CSAC is another grant we received, and I think that was twenty-five hundred. I'm not quite sure I'm right on that.
Do you have a budget for these items that you had?
Yes, yeah.
Budget?
Yeah, I can get a more detailed budget too. It's not on this presentation. Absolutely happy to provide that before the next meeting in two weeks. Thank you for your questions. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, other question? Can you talk a little bit about the Native American exhibit?
Yeah, could you please go to the slide with the pictures, please? That'd be great. Yeah, I mean, I'd have to go back and look at our record to see when it was really started. There's, again, so many good bones and so many things that we can leverage as strength points. And again, why we are requesting funds for it is so that it could really be something that we feel like really proud to show. Right now, to be honest, if I had put more zoomed-in photos of some of the display items and even just how things are displayed, even looking at this mural, which is partially covered up. There's actually a free, a free display case we just got from Centennial High School Foundation. We might be able to put there. So you can see through the display case to see the full mural, which is amazing by Antonio LaFivra. Again, it's just comparing ourselves in a positive way to El Pueblo History Museum, kind of like our big brothers we want to learn from. There's just some opportunity for us to have a lot more context, and biggest thing is the interactive displays. And so how it is now to answer your question, talks about like the Ute and a lot of different tribes in this area actually has real artifacts at this point that you can't touch, but I'd love to be able to have certain artifacts that we determine safe to touch, to be able to be touched. So people can interact with it like that. And again, a lot of good feedback overall, but just a lot of opportunity for growth and just how the whole, all of it is set up. So again, if you come in person, it'll be a lot easier for me to explain. I thought about putting a video in here but chose not to. So yeah, that's kind of the basic about the exhibit. Thanks for your question, Councilman Martinez.
Yeah, other questions? Heritage Museum? Seeing none, it seems like staff needs direction, given it's not ARPA. Can we move this from either with possibly a mayor match or a general fund? Mayor, do you have a preference?
I don't. I mean, I guess I'd like a little more detail in terms, in terms of what the proposal is, and whether the job could be accomplished for that amount of money. Seems like a pretty small ask to rehab the exhibit. Maybe I'm just used to
Larger.
bidding bids on city projects.
Right.
Yeah, and we have also put in for a grant through another organization, the Allegra Foundation out of Florida, only awards to Colorado and two other states. But anyway, we've asked for more from them, but that would not be until next year. And that would entail some rather large, semi-large construction.
Which aren't, which aren't necessary, but would be really good with the whole pillar design we want to do. So I didn't include that in this presentation because what I'm asking is so that we can at least have this baseline revitalization. And thank you for your comment, Mayor. But again, I'll be providing the itemized list to show you that is totally doable within that amount for what we want to do.
Take a look at that list and we'll figure out a path forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, so it sounds like, Maral, you'll send over the budget.
Yeah.
And then we'll figure it out of what type of money it is, what the actual bucket of money it's going to be pulled from. And then depending on that, it'll either be passed through resolution where it only needs one reading or two readings.
Gotcha.
Does everyone feel comfortable with that?
Yeah, absolutely. I understand that. You want to see the itemization.
Counselor Maishu? If we didn't have ARPA funding available, which we're almost out of, wouldn't they normally go through the CSAC process, non-departmental process?
I think there's a difference between the CSAC process and then the non-departmental process, and then also county contingencies process. So there's three separate processes that we have to play with for funding requests like these, and given that it's only fifty-six hundred. And given that it's only fifty-six hundred dollars, we spent more on um, Pueblo's Got Talent and the Chuck Wagon out of council contingencies. So I think that.
Out with council contingencies. I haven't.
I don't, I don't know. Mayor, do you have that number off the top of your head where we are with council contingencies?
No.
All right, thank you.
Councillor Atencio, did you have anything?
Yeah, requests like these are usually just one-time requests, so they don't have to go through CSAC or non-departmental, non-departmental and CSAC for ye- year-long uh, activities that the organization funded. So this is just the one time. I think we could do it.
But, uh, what is your timetable?
Yeah, um, again, thankfully, there's nothing like really hinging on this. Um, we would like to have um, at least some funds before November third. Um, I, I should, I should say like September, um, if not sooner, so that we could do what we call phase one of the revitalization before our D O D, that's more those first Friday event. Um, even we've talked as a team, even if we're not done with all the phases, that'll be okay. Um, so there's some flexibility, of course, even if it's not right away. The exhibit is still good as it is, but we love it to be immaculate. So thank you so much for hearing us.
Great, so send us the budget and we'll.
Sounds good.
Just one, one more quick question.
Yeah, Cynthia.
Uh, will you tell us the location and the times that you're open?
Yes, thank you so much for calling that in. So Pueblo Heritage Museum, we're at two oh one West B Street, right across the street from the Union Depot. And we are open Tuesday through Saturday, ten to four P M. So come, come by three-ish because you want to at least have an hour to look through all the amazing exhibits. And I invite everyone here, staff, council, if you'd like to come down, definitely want to see Lucky because he's amazing. Thank you so much, Councilman Ortega.
Ms. Dohler?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to say I, if both items um, on the agenda for tonight pass for council contingencies, we're looking at forty thousand nine hundred fifty-one dollars left in the account.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none?
No, thank you so much for considering this to honor indigenous peoples. Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda, hearing from the Public Conservancy District. So can I have Mr. Meyer, Mr. Hayes, and Ms. Kohler to the podium, please?
Um, I am Corinne Kahler, and I am President of the Pueblo Conservancy District.
Stephen Meyer, the Director of Parks.
And uh, we're here this evening to give you a little update on the Arkansas River Corridor. And um, the mission is to convince you that we need to have a master plan of um, the, what we can do for the Arkansas River Corridor. And um, we, so as we all know, the Arkansas River is the heart and lifeblood of Pueblo. Um, and it has been one of the underutilized assets of the community. It's been abused and um, ignored for, for centuries. And we'll show you a little bit later how it's been abused and how we need to um, work on making it the amenity that it really is for the community. Um, to date, within the last five years, um, a lot of money has been invested in the levee. Um, all the Arkansas River, uh, twenty-four million was spent to redo the levee. Uh, one point one million to um, put in the trail on top of the levee. The um, Andrew Hayes is in the middle of trying to redo the parking lot at Forest Street. The Pueblo Water come in a few months will be spending eleven million to redo the low-level, low-water dam at City Park. Uh, four million has been spent on bridges. And over two hundred thousand have been spent on benches, shade structures, historic signs. And that's just a little, some of the money that has been sent to um, update and do projects on the um, Arkansas River. We can figure out, okay. Um, so here are some of the, showing you some of the things that have been done. The, this is the G Harvey Knuckles Bridge. That is the new one that's, will be finished in about a month or so. And that's right by Main Street. And then you can see the entrance to the levee from the Grove Neighborhood. Um, that was put in by the city. It was a grant, I believe, to make connection to um, the Grove Neighborhood easier. And that was a mural that was painted on the entrance. And the, with the completion of the second, of that G Harvey Knuckles Bridge, the Grove Neighborhood will be having much easier access to the south side. Um, then you can see here, the, looking downstream from the Charles Lee Bridge, which is the one right next to Forest Street. You can see the trail that's on the south, on the north side, the one on the south side and the parking lot that um, Andrew Hayes will be putting in. I check with him quite often to find out when this is going to be done. Poor, poor Andrew and his emails from Corinne, not, he isn't getting them quite as often as Stephen does, but um, they do know. I think I'm on delete, but um, what can I say? I like emails. And in that area is also going to be where John Warke is be, going to be putting in his apartment. And so that will be um, a big change there also.
And I think that parking lot should be started here in the next couple of weeks, so.
I think it's like the seventeenth or something.
Yeah.
And um, just to show you the interest in the Arkansas River here is three hundred and fifty students from Villa Bella that was um, at City Park a few weeks ago. And then they, for quite a few months, all the different classes did various things to learn about the Arkansas River. Everything from engineering to water testing to nature to um, you name it. Every class was involved in various things to do with water and the Arkansas River. And then they had this big exhibit where they invited all their parents to go down to the Arkansas River and learn about their projects. So it's wonderful to see the student involvement in the Arkansas River. This is a view of all the murals that have been um, painted along the river. And there continue to be more and more murals going up. And um, this is a view of Main Street Bridge looking upstream from the Knuckles Bridge. Um, and you can see the trail. This is the continuation of the trail um, that was put in along the levee. This is continuation for going from the Forest Street um, bridge all the way down to Wild Horse. And this should be completed probably in maybe two months. Um, and so you will be able to ride your bike or walk all the way from Runyon Lake um, to Wild Horse. Or you can cross over and go on the south side. And artwork is going on top of the levee. Here are two of the sculptures that have gone up. And there'll be more added as um, more is being completed. Three should be, three more should be going up here within the next few months. And I just took this picture the other day because uh, I love seeing the amount of water that is going through the Arkansas at the moment. And even with the high water, there were people out there on their boards going over the um, different drops, which kind of amazed me. I'm thinking it's, you know, going fast and furious. So I surprised um, the number of people out on the water. And the um, low-level dam, um, this is a picture from the Pueblo Water Site. And this is the one that is going to be um, installed. I mean, I think they're going out for bid here soon. And when the water gets lower, they'll start construction. And they're showing that it's going to be completed in July of twenty twenty-four. Do you have any other?
There'll be um, I know they'll be looking at redoing the pedestrian bridge down there over the Arkansas River. Reusing that existing one there in the project too. So you'll have two bridges, one to the center of the river and then one crossing. And I think those are supposed to start this fall.
And so that is going to be a major improvement for the uh, whole area because we know that there have been quite a few deaths unfortunately in that area. So the um, Pueblo Water is going to be spending probably, you know, they estimate eleven million. We all know they come in higher these days. Um, and um, so that is going to be a huge improvement and it's going to be a lot of um, drops. And so it'll be really encouraging, a lot of rafting, kayaking, and um, easier movement for fish. So it gets down to our request. We need a master plan. And you say, why do you need a master plan? Well, there's a dainty little list here. Um, because when you, if, if you know the river, you know that um, it is tough to identify where you are when you're on the river. And so if you're in trouble and you have to call nine one one, you can't, and if you're from out of town, you have no clue where you are. And so there really needs to be places on the river identifying places so the, so the uh, um, fire department could rescue you. Um, there, so you need to have signage. We need to have parking. Right now, there's very little access to the river. You can get to the river at Moffett, but then it's at the end. Um, you can get it at Forest Street. Then you have to go to Abriendo, I mean, um, Reservoir Drive in, in Aberdeen to get to up, down to the river. Um, and then at City Park, you can, you know, kind of slide down the hill to get to it because it's uh, very steep and then, and uh, it is not very ADA accessible. Um, we need to have marketing. We need to let people in Pueblo know. It's amazing the number of people that will look at me and say, where's the river? How do you get to the river? And I'm going, uh, you uh, there's all sorts of places. Um, and, but there's not enough. It's very difficult. There's really very few places that you can get to the river and have easy access. Um, and with all of the improvements, uh, Pillar Park area by the Forest Street Bridge in that area or by the new improvements that Pueblo Water is doing, they really need to have places for events. You're sitting there going, if you want to have a, a kayak or a uh, floating raft type of event, you need to have places for parking for people to sit, et cetera. Um, we need beautification. There's a lot of old construction debris along the river that really needs to be removed. Um, restrooms, that is a continuing problem. Um, it's a major issue. We need to have restrooms, but we have no idea how we keep them clean. Um, because like at Runyon Lake, we have to tear down the restroom that is there because there is nobody that will clean it because of all the drugs and needles, et cetera. So the only answer is to tear it down because there is nobody that will clean them. Um, the ones at Pillar Park were, had to be removed because there was meth in the restrooms. And um, they were not safe. And um, and so unfortunately, they're gone after only a couple of weeks of being there for the season. Um, security, there's a lot of issues to deal with crime in camps. Um, and we need to make it safe for people feel safe to go down there. I've never had a problem, but then again, I think I'm kind of mean looking. Um, so um, I mean, they think I'm, you know, one of, what can I say? You know, and um, but there really needs to be, you know, cleanup. We need educational and recreation. Unfortunately, a lot of um, you know, the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts and a lot of the organizations that used to teach about nature and recreation have minor volunteers these days, so they really don't have a lot of opportunities. So Parks Department needs to take that over. And um, so then, you know, need a study from Nature Center to Runyon Lake. Um, as we all know, Runyon Lake, um, the, the county commissioners were going to buy it. They backed out of that deal. And so at this point, the Colorado um, Parks and Wildlife, we are signing a new contract with them. And they're going to be restocking. They're going to be, they already tore out the two docks that were completely destroyed with fires, et cetera. And so there's one dock left and they're going to be doing some improvements. But um, once again, you know, the trash, the Conservancy District has two big dumpsters down there and are dumped every week. And it's still, you know, a mess. And so there's a lot, um, but like the last Sunday, there were like fifty-six cars down there. You know, people fishing and having fun. And so it's a real popular area. But somehow we need to figure out how we can do a better. And then we need better wayfinding. A lot of the signs that have been installed over the years seem to miss. They do not tell you where the, where the Arkansas River is. So how can you have a wayfinding for one of the biggest amenities of the community with nothing there? So here's a few pictures of what I mean. Here's old construction, concrete dumped in the river, just ugly pieces of concrete just dumped. There's no reason for it. They just kind of thought it was a good place to dump it. Um, under the Forest Street Bridge, I know, this is pre-sec, I counted them. There are twenty-six pieces of rebar sticking out of the riverbed in that area. C dot um, says, yes, that was probably their issue and they'll probably remove it. And then there's like pieces of metal just stuck periodically in places along the river. There's just a lot of junk along the edge of the river all the way. And um, here's trash. Um, this is from one of our pickups at Moffett. Um, that was just, you know, we, we wearing a different hat. The Pueblo Friends of the Arkansas River, we clean up section of the Arkansas River every month. And um, we can never get ahead because it's always. And this is a picture under one of the bridges. And the other one is um, one of the stormwater outlet under Argyle. And that flows right into the river. And there's a lot of stormwater drainage ditches along the Arkansas that need to be, make sure that they're cleaned periodically because of the amount of trash that unfortunately people dump into the stormwater system in the community. And then everything on the south side just flows into the river. And it's very um, unappealing to have that amount of trash flowing into the river. And um, here are just some signage. This is at the um, Reservoir Entrance, Reservoir Drive Entrance. And once again, you know, everything needs to be replaced, updated, make it look like it's uh, someplace that we're really proud of. And here's the beauty of the river at sunrise and sunset. And I'll turn it over to Stephen so he can cover what I forgot.
Well, I think you pretty much hit a lot on a lot of it. Talking about master planning, we are looking at ma, doing, trying to get some funds to do a master plan of the um, City Park as it transitions down to the river below and the whole Board of Water Works project. If they're, they come in and do that whole kayak course or boatable uh, whitewater park through the low-head dam down there. We want to make sure we're interfacing with that, making that more of a better front door for the City Park. And making access vehicles, pedestrian. So that's one of the things we're going to be wanting to do here soon is master plan on how that ties the two together. And so, you know, if we want to take that extra step and then master plan as we go on down the river uh, or down the, up and down the river, uh, maybe we can make it part of the bigger picture, master plan, the whole corridor as well as the City Park and the Board of Water Works project.
And um, the Public Conservancy District um, at this point has committed adding seventy-five thousand to the um, plan. And Stephen was saying he thought it would be somewhere between a hundred and two hundred thousand to do a master plan. And the Conservancy District will, at this moment, has committed seventy-five thousand. And depending on what that master plan would cost, I'm sure we would be willing to chip in more if need be to get this completed because the Arkansas River is the gem of Pueblo.
Great, thanks, Mr. Meyer. Thanks, Ms. Kahler, for that presentation. Questions from Council? Councillor Flores?
It, it's amazing how much has been done as far as the amenities that have been added. But I think, you know, since we're talking to the public on TV tonight, they should be aware that the twenty-four million that was spent for the rent, for the restructuring or reconstruction of the levee system did something that's huge in the community and most people don't realize that. And that is that we were ready to be decertified by FEMA because the old levee system uh, was not uh, going to be certified. And if that happened, there would be no ability for any business in the downtown area, the midtown area to be able to get any kind of federally backed loans from any bank. Uh, if we didn't have that certification, because that would have placed our downtown area, the midtown in a special flood hazard area. And without this new levee, uh, that kind of went away. We now uh, have the, I guess you would say floodproofing that we need in order to keep our certification and for people to be able to buy flood insurance too.
Right, and it got to take twelve feet off the top of the levee and, and allowed the trail and everything else to be done on top of the levee.
Right, but I mean, it, it, it would have stopped economic development within the community. And this, this is huge. And uh, but you know, all of the other amenities that, that have been done down there is just amazing. It's the new bridges, uh, they're beautiful. I mean, it's just a perfect place to, to have a picnic or to, to take a walk uh, or a bike ride. You know, so I'm. You know, so I'm glad that you made that presentation and we'll certainly be looking at this favorably, I think, and trying to help you. Thank you.
Counselor Graham.
Yeah, it's definitely a need. Counselor Tensia and I attended a meeting about the, the new waterworks project. And there was tons of concerned citizens that came and voiced their opinion on the population and how it's going to grow down there and where people are going to park and how they're going to access the river. And so it's a huge concern for people that live in that area too. So it's, we need to look at a master plan and what we're going to do. Because I, I'm hoping it will be a significant tourist attraction down there for Pueblo if with those drops in the whitewater for kayak course. And we saw the model of it and it, it looks really cool. And so I hope we can accommodate the people who want to go down there and use the, the park and not, you know, have them trampling through people who live on that, that trail, their, their driveways and parking and blocking their driveways. We definitely need a parking lot and we need more accessibility to actually get into the river that we or that Pueblo Water is about to spend a whole lot of money in making this a really cool and safe spot. And so it's, this master plan is definitely a need.
And we're kind of under the gun because if they're going to be completed next summer, we really need to start working on this master plan and as soon as possible. Because it, you know, if they open it and there's no way to get there or parking, it's going to cause some issues. So we really need to figure out a way to start this master plan as soon as possible.
Counselor Tensia.
Yeah, it already is an attraction and people from all over the state, if not other states, know what kind of fishing there is on that Arkansas.
Oh, this is big time. Yes, there's fly fishermen there all the time.
It's full all the time. The point, my point is that let's make it bigger. Let's make it better. Let's make it more attractive. Let's make it so that people will flood down here to get it to Pueblo to, to enjoy that river. I, I'm with you all the way.
And because it's, it's amazing when you talk to people, they're coming from all over. I mean, they're riding their bikes, they're fishing, they're walking. And they can't, they say that the reason why they're here is because of the river.
Yeah, yeah. Let's do it bigger and better.
Counselor Winter.
Yeah, I agree. It's super popular with river surfing and kayaking as well. The only problem with master plans is that we always spend a lot of money on a plan that sits on a shelf. And then ten years later, we spend more money on another plan. So that's my only issue with plans, master plans.
Yeah. And more than anything, I know that we have lined up C dot to do the removal of, of the rebar that's very dangerous under the Fourth Street Bridge. And then I'm sure that the Conservancy District is really interested in getting a lot of that concrete removed. And so it's one of those things where we have to start looking for sources to do all these things as soon as possible also. Because I agree with you, a master plan is worthless unless you start the process as soon as they, you know, start giving us ideas, we have to start working on it.
Which never seems to be the case.
Okay, you know, you're dealing with Corinne and I will make sure that it gets done.
You're also dealing with many, many government entities that.
Well, true, but you know, sometimes you just kind of ignore that and you just go ahead and do it. Yeah. And I know, it's kind of like, yeah.
Other questions? Um, I, for the funding of this, is it going through ARPA or your budget, Stephen? How is that going to be?
We're hoping it goes through somebody else's budget, but yeah.
Not, not sure. Yeah, not sure yet. I'm working with Luanne, the grant writer, and she's, she's looking at some, I think, some grants possibly help, you know, pay portion of this. And then we'll see how to match that.
But first we have to find out, you know, who will do a master plan and what a master plan will cost for sure too. Because we need to find somebody that will do this and do it quickly.
And didn't we just have a master plan down there? Thinking about the paving of the road and the bathrooms down there? Or am I thinking of the site plan?
We've had little, little plans, like plan of that area. We've had a plan of the levy. We've had different segments planned. But it's been a long time since we've managed, you know, did a master plan of the whole corridor.
Okay. Yeah, I think, I think having a whole corridor at least strategically mapped out is going to be helpful. I was really disappointed to see that the restrooms were pulled right there because I know every time I walk down there, they're always used.
Yeah, unfortunately, the porta potty companies took them out. So they were too dangerous to clean, too dangerous for the public to use. So they, they pulled them.
And I have to confirm that that is true because when I was down there cleaning and went in there and you look in the toilet and there are needles floating in the toilet and there was bloody clothes around. And so it was really a very bad situation.
I think that's that master plan can help kind of identify what that security, you know, is it more lighting? What, what do we need to make this a little bit safer? Get people down there using it's going to help a lot. So if we make this more popular, it'll get the public eyes down there.
Well, yeah, right. And to Counselor Tensia's point, like I walk that trail nearly every day and there's so many vans that travel there that are from, you know, a different license plate that are surfing right there, right now. So.
It's known.
Yeah. Counselor Flores.
I was wondering, the, the new parking lot at Dutch Clark, that whole area just looks fantastic, by the way, which I knew was your idea. They do make things happen. I know that for a fact. But is there any way of utilizing, I mean, that Dutch Clark is used basically, you know, on weekends. Is there any way of working out a deal with the district to use part of that parking lot? Or is there access to get to the river from the backside of Dutch Clark?
Glad you asked. The land behind the stadium, actually, the big scoreboard is actually on the Conservancy land. So are the locker rooms. So we've been trying to give that land to the, to School District sixty. And, but we are saying, if we give you this land, we want to make sure you put in retention walls, et cetera, because there's such a drainage issue coming off the parking lot, going down that hill. And so far, they have not gotten back to us to say, yes, they will put in a retaining wall, but there needs to be some, it's a tough, tough situation because somebody needs to maintain that area going down to the river. Also, Andrew put in that drainage next to, it's on Boulder Street. If you didn't know if there was a name there. So all that new drainage goes down to the river and I don't know if he can figure out a way to make that a path down along Boulder Street down to the river or the Conservancy District, I mean, the school district. And so that's one of those issues that in the master plan, we can probably address it because it really is an issue of how to utilize that area because that would be an ideal way to have another access down to the river.
My last question has to do with, have you identified what kind of a consultant would do this? It seems like there's just a hodgepodge of things that have to be done there. But have, have you as a Conservancy District?
We haven't. We just said we'd give the money and we'd go to Steve.
In the past, you work with landscape architects and planners, park planners, those kind of people.
Now, is it, who's going to be the principal on this? Is it going to be the Conservancy District or the city?
Well, it's going to have to be kind of joint because the Conservancy District owns a lot of that land. We actually own the river. Hard to believe, but we own the river and the banks. And so we own almost, I think, about, almost all the way to the low level dam. We own a lot of that land and the water. And so we have to be a major player because of, we own it. But Stephen has the trails, he has the, an easement and what, ten feet on each side or something?
Yeah.
So he has the trails that he has to be part of. And so it's just kind of a combination.
Above Wild Horse Creek or cities. It's, it'd be a good partnership.
So I guess, do you need direction from us, Stephen?
Does everybody sound like this is a good, good direction to go with to do in the plan?
Uh, Martinez Ortega, Counselor Graham, Counselor Tensia.
Go for those grants. Goco and all those other people. Yeah.
Flores.
Yes.
Counselor Mastry. Counselor Hunter.
Thanks.
Excellent.
Okay. We'll, we'll go for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Corinne and Stephen. All right. Up next, the opioid settlement fund presentation. So I think it's our very own Ms. Stoller.
Good evening, Chair Martinez, members of City Council, Mayor Grattisar. So this is going to be a brief overview of some of the funding that the city of Pueblo has received in regards to the opioid abatement fund. As a very brief, long-term overview, I'm sure all of you are familiar with the opioid crisis and how it specifically grew to Pueblo. But on a national level, it was a, a huge deal with nineteen ninety seeing a huge increase in the prescription of opioids, drug deaths and how they've quintupled since nineteen ninety nine. And how about seventy five percent of drug overdoses in twenty twenty involved in opioid. And so a lot of what was happening was states and local governments were really struggling to deal with the crisis of so many individuals who ended up becoming addicted to these prescription opioids. And what a number of attorneys general decided to do across forty seven states in the United States, they decided to look to try to get back some of that money that they've been spending on treatment and rehabilitation by going after the opioid manufacturers and distributors who had originally stated that these drugs were safe and should be prescribed. And in twenty twenty one, we fought, saw the first settlements, which was against manufacturer J and J and three major pharmaceutical distributors. And that initial settlement was for approximately twenty six billion dollars, which was to be paid over the course of eighteen years. So again, that's forty seven separate states that that was going out to as well as a number of other provinces. When you look at Colorado shares of that original amount, you can see that Colorado got the three hundred and eighty five million dollars. And since that initial settlement, there had been a number of other settlements as well that have occurred. And you can see some of the, the other ones and the amounts that the state of Colorado specifically has gotten. Each state's share of this, the funds was determined by, by an agreement among the states that took into account the impact of the crisis on the state, the number of overdose deaths, the number of residents with substance use disorder, the quantity of opioids that have been delivered, as well as the population of the state was a determining factor in a lot of that. When you look specifically at the amount that the state of Colorado has, the state decided to break this down into four pots. The largest pot is going to be the sixty percent and that goes to the regional areas. Pueblo is part of Region nineteen. I'll, can I show you a map on that in just a minute here? And then local governments were granted twenty percent of that funding. And then there's additional ten percent for both infrastructure and state distribution. So Region nineteen is made up of Pueblo and the southeastern counties. Essentially, Pueblo is kind of the largest city in all of these counties. And the County of Pueblo is also the largest population wise within these counties. The Region nineteen board is called C-COR, was southeastern Colorado region. And they, so they are the ones that get that sixty percent of the funding. And then it was also allowed for individual counties and cities to put their twenty percent of their funds into the major pot for the, for the region itself, so that they could pool all those funds and potentially use them for larger expenditures. And so Pueblo County actually elected to put their money in the pot. However, the city of Pueblo elected to keep our funds so that money could all go locally. This Region nineteen group has funded a number of local Pueblo entities. Some of them do have branches in those other counties, such as the Health Department and Crossroads. And SCARA have all been items that have been funded by C-COR. They've been taking grant applications. Though their goal is geared toward expanding services toward all counties because a lot of these smaller counties do not have a lot of the services that Pueblo already does have. In relation to Pueblo's twenty percent, you, you should have a spreadsheet at your seat that kind of lays out the year by year amounts that the city of Pueblo is likely to get, assuming that these additional five settlement distributions will begin this year. The council only recently received agreement to participate in those settlements. And we haven't yet received confirmation from the Attorney General's Office on when those funds will begin flowing. But that original initial settlement for the eighteen years, we've already received the first two hundred thousand dollars for the first two years of that funding. So just to be clear, the funding is, is broken down as evenly as possible. However, it is not necessarily evenly broken out overall. The amounts initially, you're going to be getting a lot of money sort of upfront and then they kind of trickle out as it goes on. However, there's also the future possibility that additional settlements may be reached in that time and we would continue to get more money to fund. So looking at the city of Pueblo action on this topic today, we have this timeline. So in October of twenty twenty one, we accepted the initial settlement. December twenty twenty two, we received that initial disbursement of two hundred thousand dollars from the initial settlement. In twenty twenty three of March, we approved an additional settlement with those other organizations. And then in twenty twenty three, the Health Department's Sure Program, the Substance Use Response Ecosystem was funded for one year out of these funds and that was for fifty five thousand dollars. And then on your agenda this evening, you're going to see the additional funding request for District sixty Intervention Coordinator position. I'll go into that in a little bit in a few slides, but that looks to be the, to spend the second chunk of the funding for this year and for next year. And I wanted to review briefly the process of how Mayor Grattisar arrived, kind of at the determination for the funding of these two programs. The, the process was really helped by the Health Department's Sure Group, which did a lot of the initial work on the priorities. They've basically been working on prioritization for the five allowable distributions, which is in prevention, harm reduction, treatment, recovery, and criminal justice. Since January of two thousand two, excuse me, twenty twenty two. And they were using community stakeholder groups. They made, they did a fantastic job making sure all the options they saw were mentioned and covered for possible discussion. They ran a formal prioritization with city and county leaders. The mayor's office was part of that group. I believe President Graham served on that group as well. And Chiefs Knoller and Huber, County Commissioners, Commissioner Ortiz, Sheriff Taylor from the county and a few others handled that prioritization where they basically ranked what they thought the most important items to spend money on were. And then we also did a community stakeholder group that prioritized those items as well. And when you're looking at a prioritization, the, the kinds of things that are mentioned are, you look at the feasibility of it. Does that work for implementation within our community? The impact, how many people can be reached? What's an effort? What kind of resources are needed? So what's the most efficient use of these funds? And so this is just an example of some of the, the feedback and the presentations that we did to discuss. And then based on all of this input, then I decided to direct the initial two funds into the two efforts that have been mentioned, the Sure Program and the Intervention Coordinator position for District sixty. So for the Sure Program, that was created in twenty seventeen as a collective impact model coalition, working to ensure that everyone in Pueblo County has access to substance use, substance use related knowledge resources and feel safe discussing substance use. It helps to make sure that everyone stays aware of all of the different groups within the city of Pueblo to make sure that they're not duplicating efforts so that they can share resources and successes and really helps to break down silos. And again, they created that substance use plan that was used to kind of determine what the top priorities for the city and the county are. So the continued facilitation of this plan by Sure will help ensure that our local support entities will be able to continue to coordinate and talk to one another, prevent those duplication of efforts and then create a broader cooperation amongst organizations as it comes to putting the priorities of the substance use plan into place. For the Intervention Coordinator position, for that second chunk of funding, we wanted to put it toward prevention, particularly the use of the Botvin Life Skills Training. This is essentially where the city is able to get the greatest return on our investment. Because if you can prevent the next generation of opioid users from becoming opioid users in the first place, then all the money spent on treatment and recovery becomes unnecessary. So the Botvin Life Skills Training is used in thirty nine countries around the world, including the United States, including in Pueblo. It's very well known in the space, numerous effectiveness. It's very well-known in the space. Numerous effectiveness studies have been done. It's proven to cut drug usage by up to seventy-five percent, alcohol usage by sixty percent, violence up to fifty percent, and tobacco use by eighty-seven percent. In addition to facilitating this Life Skills Training, the position would also be able to refer students to outside organization for additional help, to offer mental health services, and to aid to teacher trainings and support of this Botvin curriculum. You also should have a quick glance of the curriculum at your desk, just kind of a sample. This is one of the booklets here. This is specifically aiming for middle school students. And as you can tell, it's very well-rounded. It's not just a say no to drugs kind of training, but it helps youth build skills and confidence so that they can handle challenging situations. And that doesn't just help, it does definitely help with drugs, but it also just helps with anxiety and peer pressure, how to, how to resist, you know, pressures to smoke, drink, and use drugs. Gives them greater self-esteem and confidence, helps them cope with anxiety, increases their knowledge around the consequences of substance and drug use, and, and just prevents a variety of health risk behavior. So in deciding to go this direction with District Sixty, I guess I went too far. We discussed the efforts that are already in place to provide this education to youth in Pueblo. And currently, those are led by Crossroads. They have a fantastic instructor and facilitator in place that provides materials and courses to a number of classes. But what Crossroads told us was that they would need additional human power to be able to reach every student, middle school student within the district. And then when we talked to District Sixty, they felt the same way. They essentially agreed, which was what, what, what led to the funding of this position, which we hope will help to complement Crossroads' efforts and allow them to protect, potentially broaden the age range of the students that they currently serve. So this position will also be able to connect with parents and provide mental health supports and connections to those community programs. So we're looking to fund this position for three years to start and have agreements with District Sixty on data collection so that we'll help be able to evaluate the effectiveness of this position. Should additional funding be sought by the district going forward into the future? And then the funding of this position should allow all Pueblo students access to this curriculum. I'm available to take any questions that the council may have.
Thanks, Marissa. Questions from council? Can you talk a little bit about how much money we have left or the city has left to spend from the opioid settlement funds?
So this is coming in chunks every year, essentially. So if you look at the spreadsheet, our initial settlement was the two hundred thousand dollars for the first two years. That's all we currently have right now. So fifty-five has already been pledged to the Health Department. This position for District Sixty will be about a hundred and fifty per year. And so we only currently have a hundred and forty-five, but we should be getting the next approximately a hundred thousand from the state starting in October.
And it's over two years?
So the position for District Sixty, they're looking for three years. But, but it won't be until, it won't be starting until, you know, August. Or I think they were hoping originally for a July start, but we're now looking at an August start for this position. And so they will request the first half of the, the funds from us, which we currently do have. And starting in August, and then we'll give them the second half, at the second half of the year, after we've received the next approximately a hundred thousand.
Okay, perhaps we should have them at council then, when that happens, so we can see what type of impact or evaluations they've had since we've given them the first tranche of funds.
Yes, and that's definitely something that we can do. The first six months might be a little tight of a turn, turn of a timeline. I might recommend that they come forward after the first year, when they will have provided two kind of data sources for us. But we can definitely have them come back to talk about the impact of, of what's been processed so far.
Okay, Council Graham.
Do you know where this person's going to be housed at?
They'll be housed within District Sixty.
Within District Sixty?
Yes, and I believe that their, their office is going to be in the admin because they're going to be going to all of the District Sixty middle schools.
Great, thank you.
Council Flores?
You know, one of the things that I've been thinking about for a long time is how much money comes into the community for mental health, which includes, you know, psychiatric treatment and opioid use and all of this. And when you stop to think about all of the organizations we have in the community, starting with the Colorado State Hospital. And then you include Health Solutions, you include the Pueblo Neighbored Health Centers, Crossroads. Those organizations. I mean, in comparison to what we could do as a city, is so, is so minute. And my question is, it would appear that we need to get all of these organizations together. Because I know for a fact they all work in silos throughout the city.
That is actually what the Sure Program does. And so we've funded the Sure Program for another, an additional year out of the Health Department. But that's exactly what the Sure Program does, is to bring all of those groups that you mentioned together to discuss what they're working on and what they're doing. And I, and I'd also mention that C-COR has funded, I think, all of the organizations you mentioned, aside from the, the hospital with, with various grant requests. So they, so, so some of that opioid money has already gone back to those specific organizations. And the C-COR has a lot larger pot of money than the city specifically does.
Well, when you start looking at their budgets and stuff, I mean, they're, they're huge. And I guess what I'm looking for is some sort of a system, whether it's this board or some other oversight, that, that they, they be held accountable for solving a lot of the issues in the community. It just seems like we're always looked at. You know, our budget is what, a hundred and thirty-three million? You're talking probably money that's coming in from mental health into our community in excess of a billion easily. So, so when you look at what we can give, I almost feel like using this money to call it an oversight. Using this money just to oversee and help hold people accountable that have these large organizations that are huge budgets in comparison to what we have as a city. And I'm, I'm grateful that we've got this money, no question about that. But I just, I just think that people are looking at the wrong group when they look at us in solving the opioid problem, when we're talking about billions of dollars out there that are supposedly there, in their mission statements to do that. And I, I'd just like to see a lot more accountability, and maybe it's this committee that you're talking about. But I appreciate your, your.
Thank you.
Council Tencio, did you have anything?
No, I just see another layer of bureaucracy. We're going to hire somebody at a nice, large pay, and they're going to work, and they're going to do stuff, and nothing's going to happen, and the opioid crisis is going to continue. I, I wish I could be more optimistic, but I'm just a little pessimistic in that we spend, like Mr. Flores says, there's all these organizations that are doing all this work, and we still have a problem. Maybe if we have an organization coordinator or whatever to coordinate all these people. I'm, I'm trying to be optimistic in that maybe this will work some, a little bit better than what it's working now. I don't, I don't, I don't know. It's just.
I, I would clarify too.
Spend our money, money on bureaucrats and, and not much on the people who were actually affected, I guess. I don't know.
I would clarify too, the hundred and fifty dollars is not the salary for this person. Half of that, at least half of that is money for the curriculum itself, which is the, the Life Skills Training books that go directly to.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not criticizing what, you know, the, the, how you're putting it together. I'm, I'm just voicing. It's, it's frustrating that we have this big problem out there, and we spend all this money, and we continue trying to do something about it. It doesn't seem to be working. It's just, I'm, I'm with you, and, and I support any efforts toward relieving the problem. I, I'm, I'm just frustrated. That's all. I'm just voicing my frustrations. That's all.
Mayor?
Yeah, thank you, Councilor. This is a, you know, this is a long-term solution. I mean, starting with these young kids and trying to get them to make different decisions in their life than the previous generation made. That's how we got into this mess, partly is because people made bad decisions. Obviously, partly because the drug manufacturers sold everybody a bill of goods that they're now having to pay for. But we could spend this money on treatment of the people that are currently addicted. We thought, looking at the big picture and what limited resources we had, that we ought to direct it to a proven curriculum, as Ms. Stoller said, that has been effective in diverting kids away from some of those choices that they make in their life that adversely affects them. Now, we're not going to see any immediate results, but long-term, I think this is a good use of the funds.
Well, just my, my own experience, I, I used to substitute in the high schools. And at one of the high schools, the assistant principal came to me. I was reading a newspaper in the library one day. And he said, I want to talk to you, Larry, about some of the kids in school. And I told him, I says, yeah, I, I know who you're talking about, that, that student that's a behavioral problem, an educational problem. He's probably doing drugs, all this other stuff. The biggest problem is that he's ignorant, but he's not stupid. He says, every other kid in this school getting the respect and the accolades that they deserve, and he gets zero tolerance. And he knows it. The only decisions that he gets to make are bad ones. Of, I hope this, a problem like this helps. And like I told him, I says, start paying a little deference and respect to these kids, and they'll turn around for you. They turn around for me because I make friends with, try to make friends with as many as I possibly can. And after a while, you pay some respect to them, they're turned into little kids. They go, Larry, how you doing? I'm over here. And he, it was the biggest badass in the school at the time, you know, so. Start treating these kids with a little respect and, and give them the respect that they deserve. Instead of, I don't mean instead of, I don't, I don't mean giving them a workbook and say, gee, put this down, write this down. And they go, yeah, yeah, and, you know, meanwhile, you're treating me like crap anyway, and why do I need to do this? And they go off and do their bad stuff anyway. I, I'm just frustrated. That's all. I'm sorry.
Part of the curriculum is teaching the teachers to kind of back up a lot of what's, what's being taught here in terms of, you know, backing up the self-confidence and, you know, the, the, the decision-making as well. Just, th- there's a lot in the curriculum, and if you read through the, if you have the time to read through the sample lesson, I think it's, it's very interesting.
Council Maishri?
As far as prescription pharmaceuticals and opioids, I mean, they're, if they're getting into the home, they're getting in through the parents. And it's the parents that really are addicted first. The children are probably getting them secondhand at that point. So is, what is the, is the curriculum based around the drug itself or just drugs in general? I mean, are we looking at all street drugs? Because that's preventative. Prevention is always great, but it has to cover all, all aspects. And then have you spoke with the State Board of Education? Because they're wanting to come and do a, I, I've heard that they're wanting to come and do a pilot program here for mental health, specifically for District Sixty children. With all of those things involved, are we, again, are we duplicating something? Has there been any contact with the State Board of Education and what their plan is in coming into the community to handle those things?
Yeah, so we have the city, as the city have not reached out to the State Board of Education. We would count on our partners in District Sixty to let us know if they would have thought that this would have been a duplication of efforts, and they made no such indication. As far as, to your first point, this is not specifically, I, I mean, this is a, a, an anti-drug course, but it specifically is meant to teach them life skills. And so that is to, basically, they've done research that shows that there are kind of three major components that cover the critical domains which promote drug usage. And it's shown that students who develop skills in these three areas are less likely to engage in a wide range of high-risk behaviors, which includes taking drugs. And that's, you know, drug resistance skills, which coaches them to be able to challenge common misconceptions about drugs, such as, you know, your, your parents said, oh, well, you know, it won't do anything to you, just, just try it, kind of thing. To, so they'll be able to, to challenge those, oh, well, you know, you can overdose on the first one, you know, kind of, kind of thing. And then through that practice, they use resistant skills and develop practical abilities to deal with their peers and media pressure and their parents to engage in that type of behavior. It also promotes personal self-management skills. So they learn like to examine their own self-image and its effect on behavior, to set goals for themselves, to keep themselves accountable, to analyze problem-solving, to analyze media advertising, and to see how it's appealing to them. And then it also develops general social skills. A lot of students who'd end up turning to drugs are because they're socially ostracized in one way or another, because they don't feel that they can connect with their fellow students. Which is again, why, you know, like team sports, for example, are seen to be such a good way to keep students out of drugs. So it, it helps them to handle social requests, carry out conversations, how to avoid misunderstandings, how to have better communication skills overall. And just to recognize that there are other choices other than aggression or passivity when faced with those kind of tough situations. So it, it does handle a lot of skills, and, and I know that a, a lot of the programming is difficult when it's in the home. But considering the amount of funding that we have and the ability to, you know, interfere in, in the homes, which we don't have for the most part unless something really egregious is happening in the home. This does tend to be the best kind of option that I see.
Um, yes, I would like to, it would be nice to reach out to the State Board of Education and see if they do have that.
We can definitely discuss with District Sixty because.
Like I said, why would we duplicate services? We want to utilize all the funds as best as possible. So, thank you.
Thank you. I do appreciate your input on that. I wasn't aware of that, so.
Other questions and comments? Seeing none, then I conclude this work session at six fifty-six. We will resume our regular meeting in about ten minutes.